I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, January 18th, 2022 Town of Cordero Madera Town Council meeting. And with that, Rebecca, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Beckman.
Here.
Councilmember Mongan.
Here.
Councilmember Ravazia.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lee.
Here.
And Mayor Casissa.
Here. If we can pledge allegiance to the flag, please, or salute the flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag in the United States of America and to the republic for which it's been one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, with that, we're going to go into public comment. This is a time for anyone from the public wishing to provide comment on anything that is not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak on something, please raise your hand. And I see that David McPherson has his hand raised, and Rebecca will bring you over in just one moment.
Yes, I was trying to see why my public comment timer hadn't joined the meeting. So let me get that started quickly.
No problem.
And while I'm waiting for the public comment timer, I will unmute David McPherson.
Thanks. And while he's coming over, just to let everybody know, which I think you may be aware of, town offices moved today, literally moved today. I think things are still in boxes. So there's a new address. It's 240 Tamil Vista, which is Hunt Plaza. So Rebecca's in those offices, but she's going through a process, again, because a moving van showed up today and it unloaded. I think she said about four o'clock this afternoon. So little patience. Thanks, everybody. And David, are you on?
I am. Can you hear me?
Go for it.
Primarily, I'm here to wish everyone a Happy New Year and also wish everybody the best of luck in the town hall move. I know that that has got to put a lot of extra hours on everybody, and I don't envy you guys, but I'm sure you'll pull it off successfully. If it's acceptable protocol, I'm just going to have my public comments that I submitted in writing about Paradise Drive Stand as my comment, unless it's necessary for me to repeat or summarize it here.
Did you want Rebecca to read?
Actually, I was just going to ask, was it sent to publiccomment@tcmail.org or was it sent to my town email?
You know, Rebecca, I did send it to your town email.
Oh, okay.
And it's possible it didn't get distributed.
It did not. If you sent it to my town email, I have not been on my email all day. I've been with movers.
Well, that makes sense. I'm gonna, you know, RJ has already responded to me, so I won't, we'll probably circulate the comments later, and I don't need to say anything more tonight.
No, I will make sure it gets added to the agenda, the late correspondence link. But if you wanted to summarize your comments quickly, or if you want me to, I found the email and I'm happy to read a paragraph of it.
I'll just briefly summarize it.
Okay.
There's been quite a bit of comment on next door regarding, first, there's praise regarding the eight-foot-wide sidewalk that extends on Paradise Drive from San Clemente to Seawolf. But of course, one of the trade-offs is that the curb lane for motor vehicles is particularly narrow. RJ has put up signage that is brilliant in that it says bikes may use the full lane, but most importantly, that motor vehicles should change lanes to pass a person on a bicycle in the curb lane because there is not sufficient room for a motor vehicle, three feet, and the bicycle. So I requested that the town kind of take notice of that unsafe condition, add additional signage. And I was also wanted there, instead of there being sharos on the lane, that possibly there would be a stencil that said on the pavement itself, bicycle may use the full lane. And RJ is looking into that. And that's really what I wanted to do is to make the town council aware that people on the B side of Cordero Madera are getting educated to the problem of bicycles and vehicles sharing that particular stretch that's very narrow curb lane, and RJ's on top of it. Thank you.
And that was was three minutes. I didn't realize since I didn't see the the comment in advance, but that was technically for an item that is, I believe, on the consent calendar. So.
You know, they're distinct, it's distinct from the signage that will come up in item four.
Oh, okay.
It is distinct, but thank you. That's it.
Thanks, David. Appreciate the comments. Rebecca, do we have, we just had another hand that raised?
Yes, that was the next, that was an email that was received and it was uploaded to the agenda packet. I know he may, it's for James Jordan, and we did receive the email. And I, it was just uploaded to the the town council packet. So if he is unable to read his comment in full, it will be there for the council and the public to see. Mr. Jordan, are you able to unmute yourself?
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm James Jordan, resident and taxpayer in Cordero Madera. It is my opinion that the Cordero Madera Town Government and the Parks and Recreation Department are misusing taxpayer money to unfairly promote the installation of an artificial turf soccer field facility in the Cordero Madera Town Park. It is also my opinion that the Cordero Madera Town Government and the Parks and Recreation Department are misusing taxpayer money to manipulate the Parks and Recreation master plan development process to unfairly favor a small vocal group of advocates who want to install an artificial turf soccer field facility in the town park at taxpayers' expense. I request that the town council stop the present effort to unfairly prioritize the installation of an artificial turf soccer facility in the town park. I also request that the town council appoint an independent person to investigate this matter. I reluctantly make these strong statements because I think that they are warranted under the circumstances and supported by ample information. This matter is about more than just an artificial turf soccer field. It's about the important principles of honesty, fairness, and transparency in government decision-making processes. In 2021, the town council contracted with ETC Institute to have a survey of the town residents. The purpose was to analyze the opinion of the community and to establish priorities for future improvements of Parks and Recreation Services. The town government had an active role in selecting the consultant and creating the survey questions. The survey was distributed in about May 2021. There were 685 responses. They, ETC presented the responses to the Parks and Rec October 25th, Town Council November 2nd. ETC says, "The overall results for a sample of 685 surveys have a precision of at least plus or minus 3.6% at the 95% level of confidence." "The survey results showed that all-weather artificial turf fields was not identified by survey respondents as a leading unmet need, or a most important needed facility or amenity, or a top priority for investment." "All-weather, all-weather artificial turf fields was ranked number 20 on the list of unmet needs. Only 16.7% of survey respondents said that was an unmet need." "All-weather artificial turf fields was ranked number 12 on the list of most important needed facilities and amenities." "Only 7.6% of survey respondents identified this as the first, the second, the third, or a fourth choice regarding the most important needed facility or amenity." "All-weather artificial turf fields was ranked number 18."
Hey, James, 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 I'm sorry, but we limit public comment to three minutes.
And where are we?
You're, you're over it by like 10 seconds right now. So I apologize. I know that you also sent, I believe, an email to Rebecca, so we'll be getting those also.
He did send the full email to publiccomment@tcmail.org, and it was just shortly before the meeting started, uploaded and linked to the agenda packet online, and I will email it to the council.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, James. We appreciate your comment.
And it will be available for the council and the public to view.
Thanks. Next up, we have Pat Ravazio.
Hi there. Yes, I'm here. You can hear me, right?
Yep.
Okay, um, I have been part of the, I wasn't planning to comment, but in light of the the last speaker, I have been involved in the long-range master planning for Parks and Recreation, actually on a couple of different occasions, and particularly on this one. And I would just like to reassure the gentleman caller that no decisions are being made right now, but that it always was intended to be a two-part process. We were going to do a written survey of the community, and then we were going to take all that input and then host some community meetings, which have been happening on Zoom. And we're a long way away from budgets being assigned for anything to actually happen, so do stay involved. I think the discussions will continue and decisions will be made. And I've been listening to the people who want turf, and I do think they tend to be the parents of a lot of kids and probably not the ones who have time to answer surveys online. And so I'm hoping everybody will keep an open mind. I think that the professionals who have been hired to moderate this process, in addition to the housing process, they're both excellent and are doing a really good job of letting every voice be heard and then just taking the notes. And then it'll be a whole process to decide what happens next. So I want to say, keep the process going. It's working. The community is talking. There's a lot of great conversation, and yes, there are competing needs, and but just like always, we'll figure it out. So thank you, and I hope everyone will just sit tight and and stay involved. Do keep coming to the meetings. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Appreciate that. I don't see any other hands raised. Rebecca, do you have any comments via email?
Let me just refresh quickly.
Okay.
No additional emails were received for open time for public comments.
Okay, and I just saw another hand raised. Peter Chase, you can bring him over, please.
Okay, Peter, are you able to unmute yourself?
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I just wanted to shout out to Public Works for the LED replacement project. I think that it's a huge improvement. It's been years in the making, and I gotta say, it's making a tremendous difference in the way the streets feel at night and the type of light that's coming down. It's a much improved spectacle. So I know it's, it's been years. So finally, it's happened at a fast pace, and I think it's a great project, and they should be applauded for getting this done finally. So thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Peter. Nothing else via email? Rebecca?
No, Mayor Casissa, no additional email public comments were received.
Okay, thanks. I see no more hands raised, so I will go ahead and close public comment. We have no presentations tonight, so that will move us to the consent calendar. These are items that have been previously discussed. They don't require further discussion. They can be approved by a single motion. Any member of the town council staff or public can have, request that an item be pulled for further discussion. So with that, is there anybody from staff or town council which has had an item pulled? Is there anybody from the public wishing to have any item pulled from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and bring it back to council for a discussion and a possible motion. Eli?
Move the consent calendar.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Bob. Any further discussion? Go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mongan?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Casissa?
Yes, thank you. With that, we'll move to public hearings, which is 5A. This regarding urgency ordinance establishing regulations for subdivision and development of qualified for Senate Bill 9. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Adam for the staff report. And one other thing is, Adam, when you're finished, Amy, if you can just chime in after Adam has finished, just maybe he'll give us any updates you have from a legal standpoint, or anything that you've heard regarding other cities are doing, because I knew we had a heavy, pretty heavy discussion earlier last week about SB 9. So that I'll turn it over to Adam. Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor Casissa, and members of the of the council. Tonight, we are sort of following up on our last council meeting on December 21st, where we discussed potential options for essentially implementing Senate Bill 9 regulations that went into effect on January 1st of this year, 2022, a few weeks ago. At that meeting, the town council directed staff to prepare an urgency ordinance for the council's consideration at this meeting. And that's what, really what we're here to do tonight is to bring forth a proposed urgency ordinance for your consideration and potential adoption. Just as a reminder, the urgency ordinance that you will be considering this evening requires at least four affirmative votes by the members of the council in order to pass. And if adopted, the urgency ordinance would take effect immediately. Just, just as a reminder, I guess, also wanted to, the direction from the council and staff heard this loud and clear as well is to also move forward with the longer term, sort of more regular ordinance adoption process as well. And we intend to do that as staff over the coming months as well. Next slide. So just really quickly, in describing the urgency ordinance this evening, I'm going to go over sort of the highlights of this urgency ordinance. And there are some changes to Title 17, which is the town subdivision ordinance that would establish new procedures and requirements for SB 9 urban lot splits. And again, these urban lot splits by state law require ministerial review, without discretionary review or public hearing. And therefore, we are proposing that this urgency ordinance would require the zoning administrator to make the determination and approval of these zoning lot splits. In terms of some of the things in the urgency ordinance, really, these are just enumerating a lot of the state law requirements and making them explicit in our own ordinance. So both parcels would have to be a minimum of 1,200 square feet. Couldn't have a parcel that is less than 40% of the lot area, the parcel proposed for the subdivision. We do want to ensure that parcels have frontage on the street. However, state law also says that if there isn't frontage, that can't be an actual requirement for denying a urban lot split, or an urban lot split, provided that there's at least access from an easement or another means to get to access to the, a street for the public right of way. There's other provisions of state law that are included in the urgency ordinance. Lot split does not require demolition of housing that has been occupied by a tenant in the last three years. And they haven't used this provision of SB 9 previously in order to create the lot split in that there, any housing actually developed pursuant to the lot split must be de-restricted and cannot be rented for less than 30 days. In terms of actual, the objective standards for structures that would be built pursuant to urban, the urban lot split provisions of SB 9, and actually the housing development provisions of SB 9, we wanted to actually create some provisions that would reduce the height of structures that would be able to be created in single-family lot areas of town, if they in fact are sort of encroaching into the otherwise applicable setback requirements in these areas. And using state law to do so, then we would limit structures to 16 feet in height, unless in the floodplain, we're allowing some provision for actually exceeding 16 feet, depending on how much you actually have to raise the structure in order to comply with the FEMA 100-year floodplain requirements for new structures. Unit sizes, the urgency ordinance you're considering tonight would limit unit sizes created under SB 9 to 1,000 square feet. Obviously, under SB 9 and and the other provisions, a, there could be two units of up to 100, I'm sorry, up to 1,000 square feet on one of these lots. And of course, there can be two lots on a single-family parcel. So in the case, that's a, an important restriction in the urgency ordinance that doesn't exist under our other ordinances at the moment. Also wanted to note that we, some of the procedures for it, for actually processing applications, we would require a courtesy notice be sent to neighbors within 300 feet of the urban lot split and within 300 feet when an actual housing development project would be applied for under SB 9. These are very similar to the courtesy notices that we have for accessory dwellings today. And we would also have, rather than an appeal, the review of the record, given these are ministerial approval processes. This is again, taken directly from our accessory dwelling unit ordinances, where the town manager, his or her destiny, would actually conduct a review of the record based on all the documentation, and really, it's a review to make sure that the objective standards that are required as part of the review of these projects are met. And it would be similar to an appeal, $300 flat fee, and the decision of the town manager would be final, final in that case. And then we also added some explicit requirements. Most of these are already required as part of the fire code, as part of the building code, but we wanted to be explicit about some of the requirements related to fire department access and fire suppression standards. One of the things we did want to add, we did add that's not currently in the building code, was that actually, if you are encroaching into the side yard, setback, or the rear yard, and you're closer than five feet from the property boundary fence, that that fence will have to be constructed or reconstructed of non-combustible material. But there are several other requirements that go along with building these units in pursuant to the fire code, such as having a solid one-hour firewall between units, fire sprinklers, et cetera. So those are the highlights of the ordinance. There's, obviously, we're, we're here to answer questions and also present you with the options tonight to introduce and approve the ordinance that's presented. Again, it would become effective immediately if forfeits of the council members go to approve this urgency ordinance. That's attachment one to your staff report. We've also included some of the background materials from the December 21st council meeting in the packet. And myself, also Martha Vitale, who helped put this together, as well as Ann Danforth and Amy Ackerman, with our council's office, helped as well in the preparation of this, or here for answering any questions that you may have.
Go ahead, Amy.
Yes. So one, one point I do want to clarify is, this is an urgency ordinance, but it is an interim ordinance. So it is not a permanent ordinance. It actually will expire after 45 days, which we've counted out to March 4th. Now, council does have the ability to then extend that ordinance for one year after enactment, and then a second extension if necessary. So this is not intended to be the final SB 9 ordinance. This really is an interim to fill the gap while we look at deeply, more deeply into some of the issues that SB 9 leaves a little unclear. I can tell you that most, many jurisdictions across California are taking the same action that we are, adopting interim ordinances as things get clarified. Belvidere has already done so. Larsper has done so. I believe Mill Valley and Nevada are on the list. Santa Barbara, Cupertino. So this is, this is the, is pretty much the standard way that cities are adopting. We can move forward immediately with crafting the permanent ordinance. One thought we had was to give it a little more time as things will shake out a little. We do know that A-Bag has hired Optico, the same consultant who worked on our odds ordinance, to come up with some model standards. They're supposed to come out late February, early March, and I think that will be pretty valuable for us to take a look at when formulating our final ordinance. So that's, that's pretty much the plan that we have. Our odds ordinance is in effect, so it's not like we have no standards. So council should be aware that, that those do apply. And, and I think, I think we, we've, we've done a really good job in a short period of time, but there inevitably will be a little tweaking that we'll do as we move along. Any other questions?
I just have one quick question, then we'll go to Charles. I'll open up for town council questions. March 4th, we can extend the urgency ordinance for another year or so if we had to?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Charles, go ahead, and then followed by Lita. You're muted.
With the SB 9 in, at the state level, was there a minimum guaranteed square footage per unit? Adam, I thought it was 1,200 square feet, if I recall, but maybe I misheard that or misunderstood that?
It's, it's actually 800 square feet.
800, okay. Per unit. That's not the ADU. That's the actual livable units. Okay. So it's above the state standard even?
Yeah. And actually, on that note, we've actually just received, A-Bag just provided a resource where they had a design firm sort of layout, sort of some model residences and duplexes. And actually, their, what they provided and what we received from A-Bag, we were pleasantly surprised in some ways to see that they were both, actually, the units that they were showing were about 1,000 square feet each.
Nice. Because that's considered kind of a rentable, lower, like affordable home.
It's the missing middle type of housing that you hear a lot about, two-bedroom, two-bath, sort of housing that could house a small family, you know?
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that, Adam.
Thanks, Charles. Lita?
Thanks. I just had a couple of quick questions. I know I have the impression that some of the jurisdictions who've passed these urgency ordinances are sort of doing it, I don't want to say to evade state law, but as a pushback. And I'm curious from you, Amy, I don't have this sense about this ordinance, but I know, you know, there's concern about SB 9 and the loss of local control, but it is state law, and I just want to make sure we're not, it's nothing in here that's, you know, would be perceived as trying to contradict state law. And then my second question is for Adam, and just a question about sort of notice, you know, since this would go into effect with just one meeting. I know you had said you'd gotten a couple of inquiries already about people wanting to do this, and if you can speak to, you know, how we're going to kind of make sure people know if the rules have changed. Thank you.
That, that's a good question. We, we have tried to carefully track state law to make sure our ordinance is in compliance with state law. And I think we, we've done so pretty carefully. We've added in some objective standards, particularly around the health and safety, the fire, and so forth. But we are permitted to have objective standards, you know, provided that they're going to apply across the board. So I think we feel that, I'm not going to lie, it was a little bit of a rush job. We didn't have a lot of time on a complicated issue, but I, I think it's craft- I'm not gonna lie, it was a little bit of a rush job. Uh, we didn't have a lot of time on a complicated issue, but I, I think it's crafted. To, uh, put the town in, in a good light in terms of compliance with state law.
Sorry, and then note, with respect to noticing, so one, I would say that, um. We've been making sure that the people who we've already been in contact with or have already contacted us about this. We've been reaching out to them and making sure that they're aware of this meeting. They were aware of the December twenty first meeting, so we're keeping them in the loop. Those were the, the folks who are interested. Um, and then certainly, um. With respect to, uh, you know. An urgency ordinance, um, we, we. You know, are going to be letting people know through. Obviously. The direct contact with those individuals, but, but certainly we can make, uh, sort of our social media pages and websites or put some information out there regarding. Regulations. I think actually what's better now is that, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say. With this ordinance, um, what would be better is that we would actually have some procedures and pretty, and standards. And actually things we can tell these prospective applicants about how to go through this process and. To be, uh, perfectly frank, we've been struggling a little bit with how to do that without, um, such guidance from. Uh, our existing municipal codes and whatnot, so. Uh, but certainly, um, you know, we'll, we'll do the best we can to let people, uh, know. What the town's regulations and rules are with respect to SB nine. And then certainly going forward with the. Sort of the longer, uh, you know, more of the permanent ordinance. I do think we'll, we'll, we're gonna do a, a, a more. Significant effort of, of ensuring that people are part of that process of actually developing and helping to inform. Sort of some of the regulations that we may want to come up with on a permanent basis for SB nine projects.
Any other questions, Liva? No, thanks. Uh, any other, Bob or Eli? No, I have a couple, um, one is clarifying, zone administrator, is that you, Adam?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, I just, I just wanted to make sure. And then, um, there's no appeal process in this, right? So once something gets approved, if I'm a neighbor or. Behind somebody. It gets approved and that's it. I can't go to the town and say, I wanna appeal this.
We do, we do, Amy, do you wanna take that?
Sure. Because this is subject to, there's no discretionary review, there's no requirement for public hearing, there isn't. It isn't possible to have a full blown appeal, but what we've built into, um, this interim ordinance. Is similar to what we have in our ADU ordinance, which is a review. Uh, of the record, uh, an independent review of the record by the town manager. It is possible someone could object and say, for example, this is a historic property and it's exempt. Under SB nine and we do think there should be a vehicle by which. Someone could raise those issues, but because of the nature. Of. The approval process, it's very limited to a review of the record to sh- ensure that the boxes. All the boxes that have to be ticked are ticked.
Okay, all right, thanks. And then I don't know if it's just me, but the part where there's a deed restriction limiting the rental. Is that verb is correct? Cause when I first read that, I thought was limiting it. For, um, cause it says for longer than thirty days. I thought I would say, to me, I was interpreting it to me was limiting it. To where he couldn't rent it for longer than thirty days. Maybe it was just the way I was reading it.
The requirement is that you need to rent it for at least thirty days.
Right.
You can't do it for, for longer, cause then it's considered a more like a vacation rental. Um, so we'll, we'll confirm the, the language and if it needs clarifying for the permanent ordinance, we'll, you know, we'll take a close look at that.
Okay, thanks. And one last question, and I'm not, this may be one of those ones, I'm not sure if anybody knows yet. Because it could affect our revenue on the property tax side. Does, do you or Adam, Adam's smiling already, he's gonna give it to Amy. Do you know how this may, may work for property taxes? Because it's theoretical, I have my house, primary residence. I split my lot. Does that mean my house and primary residence gets reassessed because my lot for my primary residence is now smaller? But now I've added a second lot. Because I've split the lot, so does that lot get reassessed? As a separate parcel just for land value? And then couple that with school bonds, paramedic tax. I get hit on both parcels?
So that is a really, really great question, um, that, um, my. Hunches was not thought through in the legislature when this passed. So, I mean, it, it is a state law, doesn't amend the constitution, statute can't do that, so. You know, Prop thirteen and Article thirteen A of the constitution still exists, which says, you know, except for the. Minor cost of living increases. The county assessor can only appraise the value of real property when you improve your property or you transfer owner. Change in ownership. So, trying to sort of. Figure out how that applies in this context. I, I mean, if you split your lot, it's not gonna. Uh, y- your primary residence. Probably would not be reassessed. It is, seems that there is a new lot that the county assessor could assess, but what base value they will use. Is gonna be really interesting to find out. I think also the homeowner could apply to have his property reassessed, because if it's smaller, it's likely to. Be less valued. So I think we're going to see the county assessors, um, having a lot of. Uh, questions to answer and a lot of, um, a lot of work ahead, I think. Depending on how, how many lot splits there are, but I think it's, I think it's a really good point. I think it's, um, it's gonna be interesting times ahead.
All right, thanks. And again, I know it's an assessor thing, it's just ultimately it could affect again our property tax revenue and or again. Theoretically, if I split my lot, if I have two parcels and they're both different parcel numbers, you know, are both those parcels getting hit for again. You know, bond or paramedic tax and that kind of stuff. And you're right, we may just have to wait and see.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I. You know, it, I suppose theoretically it could work to the town's benefit, um. Because if you have one parcel and two are reassessed and they're now more va- valuable. I mean, i- it's possible, but I think, I think those are gonna be really interesting questions to watch and. I haven't seen the assessor or anyone put anything out on this yet.
Okay, thanks. Any other question from town council members? Okay, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public, uh, wishing to speak on this topic? And I see one hand raised. If you can bring her over, Rebecca. Thank you.
Corinne, are you able to unmute yourself?
I think so, can you hear me?
Yep.
Uh, I submitted these comments earlier to Rebecca, but I'm going to read as much as I can.
Yes, and if you don't get to your, um, your comments and, whoops, let me stop. If you don't get to all of your comments, they will be available on the website for the council and the public to view.
Great, thank you. Um, my name is Corinne Grant. I'm a thirty-three resident of Corder Madera. My husband and I have three daughters who all graduated from Redwood High. When we first purchased our home in Corder Madera was considered somewhat of a blue collar town, not the wealthy enclave that it is now. As far as I know, the population of Corder Madera has never had any significant racial diversity, which continues to impact my family. Currently, there is really no socioeconomic diversity to speak of, and soon there will be no senior age group diversity as older people like us. Either sell and move or we die and our homes are sold. None of our three children can afford to buy a home in Corder Madera. We have worked hard to live here and have been denied use of our property. For decades by the town planning. There's more in my submitted comments about how that happened. So once again, the town is faced with two new state laws. The two thousand nineteen law relaxing the local grip on ADU requirements. And now SB nine allowing lot splits with two new housing units. The reason why the state has had to take control from local governments like yourself is because every time legislation has been passed. To increase the housing development in California, local governments have thrown up roadblocks. As noted in government code section six five five eight nine point five, California has accumulated an unmet. Housing backlog of nearly two million units. And must provide for at least a hundred and eighty thousand new units annually to keep pace with growth through twenty twenty-five. The nineteen eighty law noted California has a housing supply and affordability crisis of historic proportions. After listening to the town council meeting on December twenty first, twenty twenty-one. It sounds like once again, you are dead set on finding work around so as not to comply with the intent of the law. It's not in my backyard. Your plan seems to be to wait and see what lawsuits are brought to determine how much or how little. You have to comply with SB nine. Rather than trying to subvert the new legislation, I would encourage the council to implement the intent of the California Home Act. In providing not only the much needed increase of available housing in our state. But the equally important economic diversity of housing types in our town. Diversity will make our town stronger and a better place for us all to live. Another point that I would like to make is that under the two new laws, my husband and I now have options to secure our financial future in retirement. Why shouldn't we be allowed to benefit from the law passed by the state of California? Thank you very much.
Thanks, appreciate your comments.
Oh, hello, yes, before we go, we didn't really know how to do this because I'm the husband, I'm Jeff Grant. It also would like three minutes as well.
So, uh, Jeff, just wait one minute, let Rebecca reset the timer.
Okay.
Thanks, sorry about that.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we just didn't know how that would work, that's, that's all.
No.
She'll just reset it.
Just make, uh, a note that you. Are, okay, so your name is Jeff?
Yes, Jeff Grant, yes.
And I am, are you ready to make your comments?
Uh, uh, well, before I start, in the, um, in the minutes, it says that you can submit, um, uh, some documents. Uh, during the meeting as well. It's what I'd like to do is have as an attachment to the proposal, government code section six five five eight nine point five. Because that addresses a lot of what we're talking about here and all of the considerations that the state went through. And it's not in, in the proposal and the attachments you have there. So, uh, since it is a government code, I'd like it i- as an attachment to that. But yes, I'm ready to start.
Okay, so you want the government code attached to the written statement that was, was emailed?
Well, actually to the, to the proposal, that your proposal has attachments to it, right? And the attach, this is just the law, it's nothing that I've written, this is the state law. And it, it explains, it helps explain kind of your requirements i- and so, um, anyway. If you, so Tasha, whether it goes to my comments, but I, it's, it's preferable that it goes to the actual proposal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I'm ready to start the timer whenever you're, you're ready to start.
Okay, I am recommend, uh, go ahead, sorry. I recommend that the, uh, urgency ordinance, uh, be tabled. And, um, the reason is it doesn't, it doesn't really comply with SB nine as it is. And we're rushing it through, and it, that was noted earlier, and there's no reason to. In that section that I just, uh, talked about, uh, it said, the intent of the legislature that the conditions that would have specific adverse impact. On public health and safety arise infrequently. And so just by what's happened so far, this law's come into effect. You haven't been inundated with everyone trying to do this, and so we have time. We don't have to have a knee jerk reaction, uh, to doing this. So I looked at this and, you know, there's, there's a quick example of, of, of the way it's misinterpreting this. There's a proposal that, uh, there'd be a recorded deed for this, uh, uh, that the unit not, uh, be rented for. Less than nine thirty days. There's no such requirement in SB nine. And, um, it says, that section says, a local agency shall not impose additional homeowner, uh, owner occupied standards. Other than those provided in subdivision. And yet, oh, you have to record this deed. It's, it's those kinds of things that happen. The major thing that everyone looked at and we talked, you talked about in the previous, in previous meetings. Was the burden of proof, uh, by a preponderance of evidence. And one thing that happened with that burden of proof. It put the burden of proof not on the applicant, it put the burden of proof on the city. That's significant. The shifting of the burden is very, very, very significant. Talks about objective standards and specific adverse impact. And, um, when you look at that section, it says. That's defined in, in six five five eight nine point five upon public health and safety or physical environment. And for which there is no feasible method of satisfactory mitigation or avoid the specific adverse impact. The proposal that you have attempts to address specific adverse impact on public health and public safety. And then did that by referencing non-objective factors. So if you look at your documents that you circulated, you said visual, privacy, acoustic, aesthetic. Public welfare, unique quality and character of town. Those are all subjective factors, aren't they? The character, you know, for example, you had that hundred eighty unit, uh, monstrosity that you put by the freeway there. Is that the character of Corder Madera? It's not, it doesn't fit the character. So is that what the character is? You have a, the, the town hall that's coming up, that's gonna be built. And it's gonna, you know, have a lot of corner offices, that's not gonna fit with the thing, but, you know, is that the unique character of, of, of Mill Valley? And then what is the character of Corder Madera? I've been stopped two times walking on my street. Walking my dogs by police officers. Why? Because of race. They come up and they go, oh, we're just checking. What are you checking? Why are you checking? I, you know, is that the character of Corder Madera? So those are subjective factors, that's just what I'm pointing out. And that's what you're putting in there. So, um.
Hey Jeff, if you can wrap it up, you have about five seconds left.
Oh, okay. All right. The other questions I have, this provides, where does your nanny live? Where do the police officers live? Where the tree service folks live?
Jeff, I, I'm sorry, but you're, the three minutes are up.
All right, I'll submit this in writing then, uh, as, as, since we can do it during the meeting.
Yes, anything submitted in writing to public comments at TCMail.org will be added to the record.
Okay, I'm sure things, some things are hard to hear, but okay, I'll submit it. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have another hand raised, Jimmy Andrews, Andrews.
So are you able to unmute yourself?
I thought I did.
You are.
Uh, I guess. The one question I'd have is, uh, how does this improve the health and safety? Of the, of residents up in the, uh, wildland urban interfaces? And in particular, uh, if you need an objective standard, I'd go to, uh, the state, uh, highway code. And say if the road isn't forty feet wide. You can't do it. And I sent a letter to, uh, Rebecca and, uh, Bob. Uh, laying that out, but basically if you look at Chapman Park and then you look at, uh, Christmas Tree Hill. And say, what would we require Mr. Pixley to do in terms of laying those out if he came in today? And wanted to, uh, develop those two, uh, areas of town. And use that as the ultimate goal for where we wanna end up. So, that's, uh, my comment. Thank you.
Thanks, James.
Actually, if, if Jim's still online, can you please resend that? I don't know. If it was sent to me directly, I'm, I'm behind on things because of the movers day, but I'm not seeing it in the public comment at TCMail.org email.
Okay. You.
But if you, if you get it, uh, if you resend it to me, I'll make sure it gets added to the, um. The correspondence associated with this item and I'll forward it to council so they can see your comments in its entirety as well as the public.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca, Jevony, uh, other comments that came in via email?
Just refreshing, um. Sorry, it's very difficult to do this on one computer. Um, no, no, uh, because, so no additional emailed public comments were received.
Thanks, and I don't see any other hands raised, so I go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council for.
We, 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 we just had one more hand raised.
Sorry.
Okay. Okay, the next person I will call on is Garrett Heffley.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to confirm, we're talking about SB nine here, we just joined.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, um, thank you for letting us share, um. I had sent an email to Rebecca a little while back. And I just wanted to share our perspective. I'm gonna read this email, cause my brain's a little mushy at the end of the day. This was dated after the last town hall. Wanted to, and give you a heads up that we will be applying for a lot split under SB nine in January. We contracted your recommended surveyors over Camper and Meyer. Who have been great. They will be reaching out to you in early January to get the split officially submitted. I'm writing first because I wanted to say thank you for all your help so far. Martha, you've been so helpful in sending us updates, whatever. Martha, you've been so helpful in sending us updates whenever they are available and giving us your feedback about where we stand in this process. Tracy has also always been super quick and helpful. We did attend the town hall last night, which prompted me to write this letter. As I see how heated the subject has become. I wanted to express that we are coming into this with good intentions. It seemed abundantly clear that the sentiment of the town officials. Is that this is a scary unknown piece of legislature with general potential for harm to our town. I support being stringent on applications that are purely coming from a money making build as much as we can standpoint. Excuse me, sorry. Or ones that clearly present safety hazards. But I want to be clear that we do not fall into this category. Our intention for this lot split is to build our walls a slightly bigger house for our growing family and to sell our current house. We love this town and want to stay here as long as possible. Hence our interest in this opportunity. We would not be able to afford to buy a bigger house in the normal market here. So this would be a great advantage to our family and our future here. I think some of the council members are neglecting to see this perspective. Trying to become a homeowner in this area is very near impossible. So SB nine presents a positive opportunity for our family and many others like us. We know many other young couples our age who have been trying to buy a house in Marin without success for years. Because there is little to no inventory and prices are astronomical. I hope to continue working closely with you and your team through this process. We understand this is all new and there is no official procedure yet. So we hope to partner closely with you to make this smooth. We want to strike a balance between meeting our family's needs and also being good neighbors. And building something beautiful and harmonious with the town and its character. Thanks for your support. And we look forward to working with you and hopefully becoming a leading example in how SB nine can be put to good use and be implemented smoothly. Thanks for listening. Sorry, I'm so nervous. I don't know why.
That's okay, you did great. We appreciate the comments. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other hands raised, so I will go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to council for discussion and a possible motion. Charles, do you want to start it off? You're smiling already.
I'm glad, I'm glad some residents that are interested in it spoke up. I also, in the larger region, have had other people that are interested in it and they are families. And so, you know, ultimately, I do feel that in certain circumstances, it can be great. And I'm glad staff is supporting what these applicants and exploring their options. You know, I think it's heated on both sides and ultimately, we're all representatives. We, you know, it's not always personal for us. It's what our constituents or what we feel is best for the town. And, and a lot of these, I felt like in the past. It's, it's just the larger majority of people that ultimately wanted it to go one way or the other. And if you don't understand that. Then you don't get to represent the town, right? And so I just think that that's really important to understand in these kind of things. Is, you know, the reason it's frightening is ultimately if it's done wrong and it isn't the right example. We'll all get blamed for it. And, you know, that's what we're here to try to understand. Is, are these ordinances correct in just, you know, slowing it down a little bit instead of just letting it implement? And last time I was an advocate for, let's just open it up and see what happens, right? And the council said, let's see what an interim ordinance looks like. And we still haven't approved it. You know, I do look at it from the planning standpoint. And from a planning standpoint, when reviewing ADU and other similar legislation that have come down from the state. A lot of it has to do with whether the ordinances are obstructionist to the, like being, you know, allowing the lot split. As determined or. And, and so reading the ordinances with that lens, and then also knowing that Adam is and staff is fully aware of. You know, the liabilities and kind of the restrictions that the state puts on it. I have faith that ultimately they're not trying to be obstructionist. And so therefore I am not trying to be obstructionist by approving it. I think we're being cautious, but I think we have a beautiful town and I think we have a huge amount of residents that want us to be cautious and not. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. The town's great. I have three kids. You know, I think about my children and where they're going to live in the future. And so I hear that. And I pondered it, I pondered it with developments and all kinds of things. How am I going to be able to provide that? So I don't want to destroy any ability for me to do that, not alone, anybody else. But I also, once again, don't feel like this is doing that. I think that me, meeting those conditions are still very fair. And hopefully the applicants that are interested could still work under those ordinances, the temporary ones. And in forty five days, if ultimately we find that they were worded incorrectly, we can re-explore it, right? Based on Adam's feedback and working with the residents. So. That's my feedback. Ultimately, you know, this is a very hard one and I don't know which way to go. So I'd like to hear feedback from the rest of the council as well.
Eli.
Thanks, Fred. I just wanted to first thank our planning staff and also our legal staff for putting this together on a tight timetable. I realize that you guys are essentially, you know, kind of flying blind here. I think the, the state has dropped a very messy situation in our hands. And it's not even about the policy, it's just about the fact that we're asking you guys basic questions about what this law means. And we don't have answers because they're not written in the law. So I think that, you know, that is concerning. And to me, that is kind of, you know, the crux of where we're at right now. Is trying to get us to a situation where, you know, the law is the law, right? We absolutely do not want to subvert the law. I would never support anything that I saw as subverting the intent of state law. I am not anti-housing, I'm pro-housing, I'm not anti-growth. But I think that it's, it's a really tricky situation that the state has put us in by kind of churning out very wide, you know, very wide reaching. But maybe not a hundred percent developed policy in areas like this. I really appreciate the, the comments that have been raised by residents tonight. You know, it was helpful to hear, especially from, from a resident who is, who is, you know, taking up the opportunity of SB nine to, to split their lot. It was really helpful to hear from the grants. I think they raised a number of really good, you know, both points and concerns. You know, about, about this law, about how it, how it could affect residents, both for better or for worse. You know, I think they're absolutely right about the lack of housing diversity, not just in Corder Madera, but in, you know, in Marin County and to a large extent to, you know, throughout much of the Bay Area. So I think that's a real issue that we're struggling with and the state is grappling with it, of course, which is why they passed this law. I would not, I would not push back on the grants, you know, characterization that there's been historically a lot of NIMBYism in places like Marin County. But, but again, you know, I don't see what we're looking at tonight as being about trying to work, you know, trying to get around, weasel out of SB nine. I see it as trying to basically adopt as quickly as we can the basic outlines of SB nine into our local ordinance as we're required to do under state law. To make sure that we don't get the, you know, the town, the taxpayers sued by the state. And, and I think the other important thing that I would highlight is that, as, as, you know, as Charles mentioned and as our staff mentioned, this is really just the first step. This is an interim forty five day ordinance. We're hoping that, I think, you know, Amy, our, our town attorney, Amy Ackerman sent us out a memo. She, she thinks that ABAG should have more guidance for us by March. And so we're hoping that if we're able to kind of just, you know. Lengthen the timetable in which we're able to make decisions here a little bit, we're going to get a little more guidance from the state. So I think that this is actually a very reasonable first step to kind of just, you know, move forward with SB nine as we're required to do under state law. But to leave our options open going forward for us to figure out what this law actually means and how to, you know, how to put it on the books. You know, in a way that's fully compliant going forward. So that's my two cents. And I also would be curious to hear what other folks think.
Thanks, Eli. Bob or Leva?
Sure, Eli, that was very well said. Thank you. I would agree with. All of that, I think. And I appreciate the comments we got from the public tonight. But I think this is a reasonable attempt to put some structure around what is a very, very vague state law. And it's just leaving all kinds of questions unanswered. And I appreciate the need for residents who want to. Take advantage of this and do things and they should be allowed to do that. You know, we should, it's our job to try to make sure that they're allowed to do whatever they're allowed to do under state law. But one of the biggest trends in real estate right now is what are called i-buyers. And these are private companies who are coming in and buying up single family homes and then turning around and renting them. It's happening in markets all over the country. It's happening in Marin County. And what's going to happen here under this law? And why so many other towns and people are worried about it is of corporations coming in, buying up homes and then immediately splitting a lot and putting up two duplexes. And that can happen. And once that does. We'll be hearing a lot more from the public, all the council members in Marin County will be. So I think what we're trying to do tonight is a very, very reasonable, simple attempt to just try to put some structure around this. And I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Leva?
Thanks, yeah, appreciate everyone speaking. I don't need to go over everything everyone else has said. You guys have said it really well. And I too really appreciate the public comments we got. Especially, you know, the comments that are sort of in support of SB nine. I don't feel like that's a perspective we hear a lot from the public. So I really appreciate hearing that. You know, I definitely support making housing more available to various economic levels in our town. You know, I would love it if teachers and firefighters and Safeway cashiers could afford to live here. And, you know, along with that increasing diversity of our town, I agree with, I think it was the grants who said that only makes our town better and stronger, the more diversity that we have. But again, like, like others have said, I don't see this ordinance as putting up a roadblock or trying to avoid state law. I think it's trying to clarify some of the things that were left out of the state law. And I think that that makes sense. I also want to encourage the people who did comment in public comment. And especially the people that may be going through the process, you know, if this urgency ordinance is passed, like, please stay in touch. It's like Eli said, this is only a forty five day ordinance. And then it will come back to council. So, you know, there are things that we can change or we can see how it's working. And, you know, this is kind of an iterative process that we're all trying to figure out as we go along. But as it is written now, I think that this makes sense and I would support it.
Okay, thanks. For me, the good thing about, good, bad thing about going last is everybody has kind of covered all the bases, which I appreciate that. But just for my, again, I, like everybody else, I appreciate the public comments. I think we kind of got both spectrums, which I think is a good thing. To me, while we're calling this an urgency ordinance, we can pass it tonight. To me, it's almost an interim type step. Where we have the forty five days, so we can see how that pans out through other government agencies and what guidance they provide us. So I, I think that, I think everything in here, to me, it seems it somewhat is reasonable. It's not anything outrageous where it seems like would discourage people from trying to move ahead with the lot split. So I could support this also. So with that, would somebody like to make a motion? Bob?
Yes, I'll move to approve the urgency ordinance. I think it's ten fifteen.
I'll second.
Okay, thanks. Is there any further discussion from any council members? Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Council member Beckman?
Yes.
Council member Mongan?
Yes.
Council member Avasio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
And Mayor Casissa.
Yes. And again, I appreciate Adam, you, Martha and Amy for working on this. I know you put it together somewhat quickly. And again, there's not a lot of guidance out there. So I appreciate that. And I think you kind of heard the direction going forward where in the forty five days, come back to us with, again, you know, as much information. As can be gathered in that time period, we're forward to see with respect to guidance and see if we need to tweak the urgency ordinance or extend it. Thanks. With that, we're going to go ahead and move on to our business item six A, which is discussion and possible authorization for the director of public works. To approve the plans and contract documents, basically for the bids for the new Corder Madera Town Hall project. And with that, I will turn it over to Adam and RJ's online. So I don't know which of you, RJ, I'll turn it over to you. You're all smiling.
Yep, thank you, Mayor Casissa, council members. And apologies for the dual screen. I'm using one for audio visual and one for the presentation, hopefully. I'm having some bandwidth issues, but I think it's an exciting evening to discuss a very important project. So this is coming after three years of community engagement and, and discussion with council, planning commission. You know, really, really the whole entire town that's cared to participate. But this tonight is to authorize potentially the director of public works to approve the plans and contract documents. And authorize the advertisement for bids for the Corder Madera Town Hall project. And with that, I am going to see if I can. Fire up this presentation. All right, can everyone see that?
Yep.
Excellent. So as mentioned. You know, this has been a project, you know, very public project here in town for, for over three years. It started with a number of community workshops that really went through considering different locations. Went through all the various goals that this facility might try to encompass. It continued on and had a discussion about alternatives and financing. And that was kind of the early year, so to speak. It then moved through the planning commission through multiple study sessions, looking at the various SEQA compliance. Issues with the initial study and mitigated negative, negative declaration. And really, as we turned the corner into twenty twenty one, things started to get more detailed. You know, in February of that year, there was an approval for a remodel plus an addition project. But at the same time, it was, you know, we heard additional feedback to consider a completely new structure. So that then came back to council at a later date in May. And with a, an alternative to go in that direction with a slightly higher cost. We also had some, you know, long discussions about, you know, what level of green, sustainable features to include in the project. And we ended up arriving at a zero net energy and zero net carbon goal for the new structure. As we closed out the last council meeting, we ended up hearing from you to approve the, the final project. Which was a completely new building that incorporated some added new hip roof elements. Which you saw on the opening screen and I'll show again. And then it just took all of those changes and. Issued an addendum to make sure they're all captured in that SEQA compliance document. And ultimately, in June, council had directed staff to proceed with final design plans for that building. So here's the, the fast forward net summary of, of kind of what those design plans have created in the way of costs. You know, a lot of engineering and analysis has gone into this. You know, we obviously, when we came to you in spring or in June, we had some preliminary numbers, but. As you've probably got a sense from just hearing various costs in the market, you know, it is fairly competitive. Many of the supply chains are, are impacted by the pandemic still. In general, there's been some cost escalation, which is somewhat normal, but I think slightly higher in this year. But ultimately, this is where we think the product is from a number standpoint, and that's at a base bid amount of eleven point four million. I did want to clarify that there is an additive bid item and we're, and I'm recommending that it's structured as a additive. So that we have flexibility and that item in particular accounts for the photovoltaic solar as well as the battery backup system. And it really is just kind of having it as an option that we can fold in, that we, I know we want to fold in. But given we were successful with the grant funds that we received for the courtyard to do the same thing as well as the community center. There's a chance that a fund source similar to that becomes available in the next twelve months. And by having it as an additive bid item, it allows us to potentially tap into that grant fund if it is available. Whereas I think if it's included in the original project, I don't believe it would be something we could apply for. So it's just a, a, kind of a, a strategic move that we won't know exactly how it'll pan out. But it by no means. Means that we will have to give up that option. We always have that option as a talent to include those features, which up till now has been the direction that we have all heard. From, you know, town staff's perspective. So furthermore, getting into some of the professional service amounts. These are fairly accurate numbers. You know, we've been working with Caffey Architects through the whole process. So these are updated numbers. We've also been in discussion with. Over about four construction management firms and have tenant proposals that are kind of ready to go. And so they're, they're in this. over about four construction management firms and have tenant proposals that are kind of ready to go. And so they're, they're in this range as well. And um, so we feel like this is a, a pretty um, accurate estimate, you know, and we think it's a, a good number to present as part of a potential bid um, package out to um, potential contractors. And with that, um, I will open it up for questions.
Thanks, RJ. I just have one quick, I may have several more, but um, can you just kind of lay out the schedule and the timeline for us? When it would go out?
Yeah.
When the project would start, length and that kind of stuff?
Absolutely. Um, and actually have a couple of points on that. So if council were to authorize us to proceed with advertisement, um, we would likely put out the bed and then, or put it out on the streets um, for contractors in the next week or two. And we would come back either the March fifteenth or April fifth meeting uh, with those bids in hand and a summary of the actual numbers um, based on those bids. And for a potential um, authorization for contract award. Following that award, potentially about a month before um, you know, to get con- contract documents in line before we break ground. And then roughly um, fourteen to sixteen months of construction. So potential move in date of summer twenty twenty three.
Okay, thanks. Um, are there any other questions from town council members? Uh, yeah, go ahead, Leva.
Thanks. Just a quick question, and this is just my ignorance, but how did, how did the bids work? Like, did, if somebody bids for this, are they agreeing to do it for our budget amount?
Yeah, no. So we put an estimate out and um, contractors will definitely look at that, but ultimately they're gonna bid whatever their number is. And so their number can be higher or lower and um, we're just going off of um, you know, so we hired MAC five, which is an um, estimating firm. That's one of their specialties. So they're constantly doing detailed estimates. They're looking at individual items. They're collecting bids from all around the region, all around the barrier, constantly updating their numbers. And so that's how we arrive at our estimates. But ultimately, if a contractor wants to take a, a, a minimal profit compared to the next contractor, they're free to do that. And um, so it's ultimately their number that will control um, where this, where this all goes.
Any other thing, any other questions, Leva? Thanks, Eli.
Thanks, Fred. And this kind of is, is related to, to Leva's question, but one thing that I would add is, is to the, to the last thing that RJ said there. The contractors make their bids, but it's up to us to decide whether or not we accept, you know, any of those bids, right? So that is, is one important caveat, I think. And, and that leads into my question for RJ, which is, RJ, as you said, obviously, it's, it's a very weird and volatile time right now in the construction market and prices are, you know, all over the place, um, but generally going up pretty, pretty starkly. I'm just curious, has staff started to think about any sort of contingency options that they might present to the council if, you know, say, in a worst case scenario, say all the bids come back and the lowest one is at like fifteen million and they just go up from there, which is already far above what we've been thinking. Have you guys started to think about, um, you know, some, some options going forward that you might lay out in that situation?
Yeah, there's a couple. Um, so on this initial one, uh, we didn't go in and start, you know, making windows smaller and changing the look and feel of the projects. Um, we still felt like we were in a reasonable range that um, felt like we had support without doing that. Um, if bids come in, you know, fifteen plus million, then that's definitely an option we would have to consider and start shrinking the size or reducing some of the elements that, that add to the costs. If we get a project that is slightly above budget, uh, we can actually try to value engineer on the fly where we would still award the project, but receive direction from council that there's a goal to trim some things and an expectation that, you know, some of those elements are gonna get reduced. Um, that's, that's if we're within a shorter range. At any point, if, if we just think the numbers aren't reflective of the market, or, or we think we'll get better bids, we can always turn around and rebid it again. Um, so those are kind of three initial tools. And then the other one is um, you know, if, if it's, you know, part of it is the overall cost, some of it is just the cash flow and, and how you kind of pay for things over time. And, and there's elements to still fund the project, but maybe put it on a slightly slower track that maybe becomes more um, you know, a contractor likes it and reduces their cost because of that, you know, so that you know, we'd, we'd analyze all three of those or four of those options, but, but there are some tools and we're hoping we don't have to dive into that toolbox and we hope we get some, some favorable numbers here in the next you know, month and a half, two months, but uh, we will see.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Eli. Uh, Charles? I think you're muted.
RJ, with your, since your tenure with the town, how many of your large infrastructural projects have gone ten to twenty percent above the estimated cost?
Um,
Euro?
Uh, yeah, not many. Um, maybe one or two at the most, but um,
Right.
Maybe we've been lucky. Um, yeah.
So that, yeah. Um, ultimately, given that record, do you feel that the estimate is um, generous? And then also, just to clarify, you did increase the, the, the overall estimate based on current inflation numbers, right? And the escalation since, since the approvals and the last bid, correct?
Right, yeah. These estimates are fresh within the last couple of weeks. Um, and so they're, they're taking the most current data that you know, these specialty firms have and incorporating them. So
Okay.
You know, it, it's, it's about as accurate a number as we could possibly estimate. Um, and
Right. We didn't, I don't expect you to be a fortune teller. The other, the other one I had a question with um, is, is this a, uh, are we regulated to lowest bid? Or ultimately, can you evaluate the bids based on track record of the applicants and, you know, that type of um, evaluation and a point scoring? Like, what, what are we held to as far as um, taking this out to bid?
Yeah, so we are um, planning to proceed with lowest responsible bidder. Um, so that essentially is the lowest bidder, um, unless they don't meet a qualification, if they don't have a specific license that's required or, or, or something along those lines. We have some financial requirements and bonding requirements and insurance requirements. You can go through a prequalification process, um, but um, in my experience, I, I've had you know, overall good, good experience with the competitive bid process without going in that direction. Um, and you would limit your pool and, and potentially costs could come up for that reason. So doesn't always make the construction management component fun. If, if you get someone who comes in really low that wants to hit you at every corner for change orders, but I think in the end you end up with the lowest.
Do we have a third party reviewer to the cap uh, staff uh, that reviewed the big drawings to make sure that they were complete and accurate?
Yeah, so we actually, um, that's a process we're gonna undertake here in the next couple of weeks as part of, so we will MAC five, who did the estimate, also does constructability reviews and they are gonna do some, about a two week or so constructability review beyond what they already know about the, the building. And um, we'll be able to wrap any minor changes through an addendum prior to the final bid.
All right, that's all my questions. Thank you, RJ.
Yep.
Uh, I just have a couple. RJ, do you, would you expect to get multiple bids on this, on the project?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. Um, and I think that's one thing that um, we're really gonna focus on is um, expanding our notifications. You know, typically, we might just notify via the Marin IJ and the builders exchanges. Uh, but given this type of project, we really want to look at you know, newspapers in the, in the East Bay and, and all sorts of other things and, and higher frequency notifications. Making the bid period slightly longer. Um, you know, often we're in the three to four week period, but I think at least a five week bid for this one. So really try to get a lot of interest and then also just working networks. Um, so amongst um, you know, our staff, the um, design team, the CM team, really just pushing it out to, to all sorts of builders.
Okay. And then um, the bid, it's only, it's purely construction, correct? It doesn't include furniture, technology, anything like that, right?
That's correct. Um, yeah, because um, yeah, if it did, it makes it, um, you'd have to really design and have all the specs for all those individual items. Um, so we do have um, that um, set aside. I, you know, Todd's been kind of I guess, taking the lead role on, on, on how that all works out budget wise, but um, it is accounted for and, and the numbers that we know we can fund without impacting projects.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure that for full transparency, we're looking at X million for construction and then another X, whatever thousand dollar, X amount of dollars for again, furniture, technology, the furnishings, I want to say, on the inside. The other question, which I don't know, it may be more for a discussion when you come back with the, us for the bits. If I can remember, I think when you estimated it last, it was around ten and a half or ten point six million plus or minus. So it looks like we're about eight hundred thousand over. And again, I know there's supply issues, building materials have gone up. But I don't know if you know how we're gonna cover that, either through sales tax measure, or I'll say the financial part of it.
Mm-hmm.
But, and again, it may be a discussion for when you come back for the bits um, with us, to us.
Yeah, um, I will say that um, you know, leading up the holidays, myself, Daria and Todd did really, from our, each of our own angles, really map out. You know, for my, for my side, all the projects that we would normally use for, for you know, Measure F and other funds and, and kind of see where they are and, and where the commitments have lied with um, council and the community. And um, so I shared my spreadsheet, you know, Daria ran her numbers from what's available and what else is incoming and all those things. And and Todd took a look at it as well. And so we do feel like we are still able to um, proceed with the projects that we've committed to definitely over the lifespan of this building. And um, so based on these numbers and, and based on the um, furniture budget. So we, we feel like we're good. And, and like I said, hopefully things come in within a reasonable percentage of this estimate, or even better, lower would be great, too.
Okay, all right, thanks. Any other questions from town council members? Okay, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on the bidding process or the bids for um, Newtown Hall? Did we get any uh, comments for the, via email, Rebecca?
Let me double check the email and see.
So everybody knows, everybody knows because of the move Rebecca's working off one computer and she's in a new office and everything's a little bit slow.
Yeah.
We appreciate your work.
Um, we didn't receive any additional email public comments, but we did receive a question from Peter Chase who asks, are the final design documents available online or by inspection at Public Works?
Uh, RJ, can you take that, please?
Yeah, um, I'd be happy to connect with Peter and, and um, send him a link to the, the files if he wants to look at them.
All right, thanks. It sounds like Rebecca, we have no public comment versus email?
Yes, I, I, I believe that's correct. I'm just checking my personal town email quickly since several people today have already um, sent emails to that instead of the other one. And I didn't have that open. So just let me check that quickly. Just to be sure, I'm not missing any comments.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate that.
And I'm not seeing any, any comments on, on this item that were sent to my, my town email.
Okay, thanks. Given that, now we have no other hands raised. I'll bring it back to town council for discussion or possible motion. Uh, Leva, you want to start us off?
Sure. Um, yeah, I appreciate all the work that you guys have done on this, RJ. Um, I, you know, it, it's a little bit of a, an uncertain time with everything that's going on in the market and prices. And so I wish you could guarantee me that we're gonna, we're gonna stick with what we've, what we've got so far, but I know you can't. And so um, uh, but I certainly think it makes sense to go ahead and send it out to bid and see what we get. And I'm looking forward to evaluating our options when we get to that point.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Charles?
Uh, RJ, I like that you added the caveat that uh, we'll have a fifty thousand dollar savings if we do that addendum item, whether it's through grant funding, which is fantastic gymnastics, by the way, but um, you know, uh, I did the math. If ultimately we have a fifty year lifespan of the building, which is half the like, you know, proposed to almost hundred year, it's two and a half million dollar savings. And last time I looked, my electric bills never stayed the same since the nineteen fifties. So I think, you know, that's a, that's a huge amount. And in the end, it might end, end up paying for the building, but uh, that's besides the point, but I enjoy those notes that you put in there as, so that we understand the larger lifecycle context of what we're really approving, so.
All right, thanks. Eli or Bob?
Uh, yeah, just great job, RJ. And I support moving forward, authorizing for bids immediately. Thanks.
Eli, nothing?
I second all the comments of my colleagues and I'm happy to make a motion that we uh, authorize the director of public works to approve the uh, plans and contract documents and authorize the advertisement of uh, bids.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, we have first and second. I'll just add a couple more comments before we take the vote. I appreciate RJ, all the work we've done on this. I know it's been three years in the making. And the other thing, if I can remember in your staff report, um, staff added that this is actually a priority one item, I believe, in the work plan. Um, so it's one thing that they can check off the work plan. So I think that's great also. Um, so with that, there's no further discussion. Go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mongan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
And Mayor Casissa.
Uh, yes. And with that, we'll move to item sixty, which is discussion and possible authorization for the director of public works to execute a professional service contract regarding the storm drain master plan. And it looks like it's RJ night. Um, so we'll turn over RJ.
All right, let me uh, shift presentations here. Bear with me one minute. Okay.
RJ, are you in the new offices, too?
No, our, uh, we're staying over close to the action during the build. Plus, uh, if we can avoid moving, we will do that. Um,
You're the lucky one.
Yeah. All right. Um, thank you very much, Mayor Casissa, members of the council. So this item here is to potentially authorize the director of public works to execute a professional services contract with Shaft and Wheeler consulting souvenirs in the amount of five hundred and thirty seven thousand and four hundred and sixty dollars. So um, just wanted to spend a minute and kind of revisit the, the purpose of a storm drain master plan. So really, this is, you know, that comprehensive guiding document that provides analysis of our existing storm drain and flood control facilities. Um, it looks at existing conditions of those facilities. It looks at capacity, you know, and when we talk about capacity, capacity to take in storm waters. Whether it be, you know, you know, storm related, tightly influenced riverine, you name it. Analyze those, model them, and then come up with a plan to address the highest needs and also a plan to fund those improvements. So, you know, the question of why now? And I think it's simply put that um, it's, it's been a while since we've had that master plan. Um, the last one was completed in two thousand and eight. Um, it was a multi, it was, I think it was a three year effort um, done over two phases. And at that time, the cost for those two phases was six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And that was done by Ann West. And so I think that document is, you know, definitely served and, and done well for the town. But at this point in time, um, it's in need of a an update for um, you know, new improvements, um, new inspection, new analysis of our, our infrastructure. So with that, um, this item, I believe, has been on um, the town council's radar and various budgets for at least a year or more. Um, I know it was, it was listed in the climate adaptation assessment as one of kind of the next steps to really understand our vulnerabilities and, and really safeguard our town from floodwaters and, and tides and whatnot. Um, so DPW um, was able to advertise an RFP in fall. We had heard from five plus firms that were interested. Ultimately, we only had two that submitted and perhaps that was maybe because they saw that, you know, some of the heavy hitters were looking at this. And so we did get proposals from two, you know, very reputable firms. We went through the interview process. We went through the proposal review process and we ultimately selected Shaft and Wheeler internally to kind of negotiate and kind of refine scope with. Following that selection, we went on some field visits to really help them understand our needs and refine the scope for our town. We also included our flood control board chair and vice chair and some of those field walks so they could provide input. We also went back to the flood control board with that kind of earlier scope to kind of get feedback. And we heard some great things and as a result, we added some elements. We added a little more geotechnical effort to better understand settlement and also some survey work to kind of understand the grades, but also potentially set up some locations where we could do some educational and/or kind of monitoring areas over time, especially if we think they're prone to segleverize. So Shaft and Wheeler, this is many, this is a map showing the jurisdictions that they've studied here in Marin. As you can see, they've done work for Mill Valley, Larkspur and Sandrofell, all, you know, basically surrounding Corder Madera. So they're very familiar with the terrain, the watersheds, the precipitation, so much that that was a big factor in selecting them as the consultant. Here is kind of some of the main buckets of things that, you know, they're gonna look at as part of this effort. So when we say G I S, that's the digital database of our network, you know, showing all of the inventory of the different pipe sizes, pipe size, age, all those things. You know, then putting that into a model and running the model, you know, based on various precipitation events, determining, you know, which ones aren't going to be able to flow as much water as we like and all those things. And then taking those, you know, outputs from the model and realizing that, hey, we're gonna have to do projects in certain areas. You know, this pump station can only handle a 25 year storm and we think we ought to have a 50 year storm event or whatever the case may be. And really building the lists and kind of coming forward with a tiered list with cost estimates associated to it. So we can build a, you know, ideally a 10 year plan on what we want to build and fund over that horizon. You know, obviously something of this magnitude is going to have some outreach components. So, you know, I think it likely the midpoint, and this is a multi-year project. This is roughly a two, perhaps two and a half year project. Somewhere around the midpoint after we've done that kind of existing conditions assessment, we'll come back to flood board and council and kind of talk about and present what we've learned today. And we'll probably have some questions for, for you all in the community about, you know, what are the various goals, you know? And perhaps it is, you know, what is the level of protection we want? Is it that 50 year flood event? Is that 100 year flood event? What is it? And kind of put some numbers to help put in perspective of kind of what it's going to take to get there if we're not there already. I mean, hopefully we do this analysis and it's just kind of minor repairs, but you never know. And then once we have a better understanding of those goals and those needs, then we get into the financial, financial analysis of kind of how we can make that happen. And that's one of the other buckets here for the master plan. So when we, you know, want to get into a little bit of flooding, you know, this will also look at two different, very different types of flooding. It'll separate out kind of what are the annual flooding issues? And as you can see, you know, we've got an image here on the right with settlement and bird baths and king tides and pipe failures. And those things are, you know, if that's the extent of what we're dealing with, then really we're, I think, in an okay spot. But, you know, we definitely also want to really focus on the catastrophic failures and make sure that all of our retention basins and lagoons and pump stations are all on the up and up so that when that big event comes, when we're at least ready for it, that everything performs as you want. So this will really look at both and expose vulnerabilities on both sides of this discussion. This firm was also selected because they had some good value engineering approaches. You know, we could CCTV and record every pipe segment and spend just the, you know, $700,000 just on an effort to get a sense of those, you know, pipe conditions. But, you know, definitely that's not a good use of funds. You know, here's a simple modified GoPro device with some two heavy duty flashlights that they can record, you know, from each side of a pipe and really get a good sense of, of the condition. And they can, you know, two man career might be able to get, you know, I don't know, 50 pipe segments in a day. And so things like that really move forward and move quickly at a lower cost. The other one that came forward in the kind of scoping process was, you know, I really wanted to get an understanding of the capacity of our retention basin. So the kind of conventional way would be to go do a fathometric survey and get out on a little paddle boat and really prod down and get the exact elevations of everything. And, you know, something like that might be 30,000 per basin. And, you know, we've got seven of them. And so, you know, you're doing a huge chunk there. But we came up with a strategy that we think we're going to employ about drawing the water down because we've got the pump stations and we tend to do it in summers anyway. And then do a drone survey over the top. And so with that, we believe we can get the level of accuracy that we want at, you know, a fraction of the price. And so it was some of those innovative discussions we had in the interview process that really made this company stand out. And so we were pleased, you know, with, with what engagement we've had with them thus far. As part of this work, all of our pump stations and floodgates will be assessed. So, you know, looking at the age of the pump, the power of the pump, the capacity, all those things. Many of these sit on structures. So looking at the structures, is there exposed rebar that, you know, all of a sudden needs a major fix? Because if we don't, you know, it's, it's going to be compromised. And so all of that is included. So is looking at things from a, you know, climate adaptation assessment standpoint. So, you know, once we build the model, we can say, well, what happens? You know, if we look out 10 years and the, and we, what, what, what do we look at? If the tide is X number of feet higher and the storm is, you know, more intense, you know? What does that do? What protection do we have? So we'll have the ability to run that and that'll be a chapter in the ultimate plan that gets drafted and brought back to you. So this is kind of a simple output of what this kind of model would look like. It's, it's gonna, these are going to be, these circles are various catch basins that would potentially overflow. So obviously, you know, the red would be more severe, showing areas that are going to have more local flooding. And then there's also a 2D model option that we could do in specific areas if, if we think we want more detail. And it'll actually show potential perimeters of those flows in those areas. So that's something, we have some flexibility in the scope to do that where we think it's appropriate. And with that, I will open it up for any questions.
Are there any questions from any member of the town council?
I have a quick question, Fred, if that's okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
RJ, I just wondered if you could talk a little about sort of how often we need to do these? I know the last one was, did it say it was 2008? So is this just something we kind of need to do every like 10 to 15 years? Or if you could talk a little about that, that'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, I think 10 years is definitely a good sweet spot. You know, something clustered around 10 years makes a lot of sense. I think we're probably, you know, a little late to the game. You know, I think this might've been something we could have done a little bit sooner if we were really planning things out and had all of our kind of ducks in a row. But yeah, eight to 10 years seems like a good number.
Eli?
Thanks, Fred. I was just curious, RJ, did we have a specific budget number for this study?
Yeah, so I think originally through the climate adaptation assessment, it was hovering, I think, closer around 350,000. I believe we updated that more recently in kind of the recent budgets. And it's definitely accounted for in the most recent budgets. And I think part of that was driven by, I was actually a little surprised when I saw that the prior master plans went for 670,000 dollars back in 2008. And then I think really, given it's been so much time since we've had any modeling done and given how much our system depends on these retention basins, I think it's prudent to spend the money at this time and do that analysis. And then kind of going back to, to Councilmember Morgan's question about years. I mean, if we get a really good model, which we intend to do, that lives on and we can continue to update and use it. And so perhaps if we do another, you know, storm drain master plan in eight to 10 years, instead of that project being, you know, 537,000, it's, you know, 300 or 350 because we're using, you know, so much of what we've already built. Whereas we're kind of starting from scratch when it comes to the actual G I S database on this one. The prior ones weren't done kind of on that software program. They were done more by, I guess, kind of manual calculations and other things, so.
Got it, thank you.
Charles, did you have a hand up?
Yeah. So I thought, is N B S the same financing and grant as the, the climate assessment planning process? Is that the same consultant that's doing it for that as well?
Well, no, I do not recall if I'm a head.
Okay. And then in general, do you find that the climate assessment plan as it stood and then as it's going to evolve is going to work in synergy with the, with this planning process?
Yeah.
Is that nexus you or ultimately are there like, are there parts of this plan that specifically tie in and help inform the overall climate assessment? I personally, for one, when we saw the assessment flooding plans, I felt like those were as if there wasn't any kind of stormwater, you know, pumps or anything like that. And so they were a little bit deceiving to me in that, you know, that's never going to happen with the infrastructure in place. So this is the infrastructure side of it. So when we see those, are we going to see updated ones that show how that's going to be resolved from a stormwater standpoint? Is it's, it's an evolution of it or how do you see those two?
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. And let me go back and answer the question about a financial consultant. So we didn't have a financial consultant on the climate adaptation assessment. I think we had some budget numbers and some figures, but no one really going through a detailed level of planning. But maybe there was a different one.
Well, so what, what I understood is as part of that, and then the ongoing maintenance of the assessment plan was that we brought on a grant specialist that's constantly looking for funding resources outside of our local government. And so is our, as that is part of a larger regional, you know, process being in the Corder Madera Creek, you know, watershed and everything like that, is that something they're going to be looking for? Is that something that even with stormwater that we could look for grant opportunities or synergies with local jurisdictions adjacent and, and that type of methodology? Is that included or understood in doing this?
I, I think, you know, as staff and we have some resources as well outside to go after grants and we're possibly going to do that. I don't, that's not the role of this sub consultant. I think they're mainly going to work within our various budget ranges to come up with some scenarios. And, you know, if we think we can dedicate, you know, 1 million versus 2 million a year to these deficiencies over a 10 year period, they're gonna be able to spit out, you know, hey, what it is we can accomplish with those various scenarios. And then hopefully attach some kind of risk analysis with that. You know, if we're not, you know, if we're on the low side of the spending, you know, what does that mean? What's not getting addressed? And then what, as we look forward beyond the 10 year cycle, you know, what deferred maintenance costs go up? Because we haven't spent enough. So I think that's their role. But I think your other comment, which I think is very important is, to me, this is very much the other piece of the engineering that needs to be understood before we can really answer the whole question of what came up in the climate adaptation assessment. You know, we did get a lot of feedback about, you know, well, you know, there's, you know, street pawning, street flooding in Marinico, but you know, that's just from, you know, the watersheds above. That's, that's not from the tides or whatnot. So, you know, we want to be able to answer that, you know, how much of that is, you know, inland flooding? And how much of that is, well, the water's trapped because the tide's higher and can't effectively move out like it should, right? And so now we'll go to model that and really speak to it.
And so in that, we talked 1D and 2D, but really you're talking about 4D predictive kind of, you know, people on the lagoon see you a week ahead of time, understand weather patterns and drain it so that we have that extra capacity. But they'll be doing that kind of modeling or understanding and in relationship with kind of climate models. Is that what I'm here like as part of that process? And then one other question, I'll leave it alone because you're, it is, so my understanding also is with stormwater that sometimes it can drastically affect our ability to move sewage. And so will this tie in and look at the effects that it might have on the sewer district as part of the planning process and the interrelation between stormwater management and the sewer and trying to fix any kind of outstanding problems with, you know, a lot of influence flow that like gets over capacity and that type of thing? Is there a synergy there as well?
So our, we do have a sanitary district sewer master plan that's, I think, almost a year and maybe nine months. And so it does have its own component of climate adaptation assessment. I don't think there's enough of a line to draw between the two to where we're gonna completely connect them other than the elevation at which the pump stations sit perhaps. But to kind of look at the potential for any leaky waters from one pipe or the other and how it interacts. And I think that's probably.
Well, to me, it was more like, is there, is there hotspots where you have to adjust elevations in the stormwater or divert it so that it doesn't over? Yeah, and if that's a, so it's good. I for, you know, the sewer, so if the sewer like master plan ultimately identifies some kind of hotspot, then that could be looked at if it's, if it could be solved. I'm just trying to understand. We have lots of master plans and I wonder what all the different overlaps are happening. So I appreciate.
Yeah, and that, that's very true. So yeah, risk assessment and some people use the word target value. So, you know, if a flood occurs, you know, in an open field versus, you know, in a dense, you know, single family neighborhood, you know, there's a difference. And so understanding those.
Any other questions from council members? I just have one for you, RJ. I think you mentioned this is a two or two and a half year process. So at the end of two, the two or two and a half years, that's when we'd have, I want to say, the master plan and you can start prioritizing items. But in that interim two years, if the consultants came back saying, hey, we found something that's really major, it needs to be fixed now or, you know, within the next X amount of months, that would kind of get bumped up as a priority and you wouldn't wait on it?
Yeah, and, and I think the reality is there will be something that pops up like that. They're, they're bound to find a critical pipe that is corroded, right? Or a pump that is on its last leg. But that's okay. Knowing is better than not knowing, but yeah.
And again, that would just get bumped up and prioritized like an immediate type need versus we're not going to wait two years.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, thanks. With that, I'll go ahead and open up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this topic? And Rebecca, do we get any comments via email? And I don't see any hands raised.
Thank you, Mayor Casisa. I'm just refreshing the Outlook inbox and it does not.
Outlook inbox and it does not appear that we received any emailed public comments on this item.
Okay, thanks. With that, I'll close out that public comment, bring you back to town council for discussion of possible motion. Uh, Bob, you want to start us off? And or make a motion?
Yeah, I make a move that we approve bidding this. We have the most complex stormwater drainage system, I think, in Marin County. And moving forward on this immediately, RJ has been doing a great job the past couple of years. But getting an overall vision of what we need to do for something that is this complex for a town our size, I think is critically important. So we should move forward with this immediately and I'll make a move that we do. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there a second? Uh, we'll go and make Eli second. He was faster. Um, is there any other discussion? Okay, go ahead and call for the vote.
Council member Beckman?
Yes.
Council member Mangan?
Yes.
Council member Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
America Sisa.
Uh, yes. And thanks, RJ, for all your hard work on this. Appreciate it. With that, we're going to move into, uh, council reports. Todd is not with us tonight. Nothing bad, all good. So we don't have to worry about that. I did ask though, um, since we have Adam and RJ, if they could just give us maybe a quick update um, from their respective areas, like Adam maybe on the housing element and RJ maybe just on some major projects that are going on around town. So with that, I'll turn it over to Adam real quick.
Sure, thanks. I'll, I'll be, I'll be brief, but, um, with respect to the housing element, this is, um, we're, we're sort of in the midst still of our major sort of effort at public outreach, um, which is our six-month uh, and six-part housing element workshop series. Uh, we just had our fourth meeting, a workshop last week. We actually had a little bit more attendance, uh, than we had in the previous workshops, but we're right around 40, 40 attendees at each meeting. Um, but our, uh, we're getting some really good feedback there. Um, we also did a workshop just where we set up a, a tent at one of the last farmers markets at Town Center and actually contacted almost the same amount of people we're getting at the workshops. It was great to see people in person and talk to them, uh, you know, get into conversations, uh, that are free, a little bit more freewheeling than we're able to do on Zoom. And so that's, it was really nice to do that. Um, we contacted about 35 people there. Um, so we're, we're in the midst of that. We have another workshop, um, coming up and, and on a February, um, shoot, uh, 12th, I want to say. And that will be number five. And we're entering really a critical phase of, um, getting public input to help us form our actual land use proposals for actually some of the sites that we're going to need to look at, changing the zoning, probably increasing the density for housing that's allowed on certain sites throughout town. And so I do want to, um, encourage obviously everybody to, to show up, but we will come back. I've talked to Todd about this and, and brief and update the, the council at one of your February meetings about where we are in terms of the housing element and some of the land use proposals, where we're going in that direction, what direction we're going. We're also going to do the same with the planning commission, probably at a special meeting in the first week of February. So we're a lot of meetings, but I think it's a really important time to be doing, um, this work so that we can develop our proposals. And then obviously we're jumping into the environmental analysis that will have to go along with that, which is a lengthy process. But, we're, we got another year, year to go on this, but also a, a, a critical point in, in the process right now. So uh, with that, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it there in terms of my, uh, my report on the house now.
All right, thanks. Appreciate it. And I've sat in on some of those meetings. I think they're really well done. They're really thought out. I think the entire process has been, you put a lot of thought into it. It's very logical and methodical. So thanks for that. Um, RJ, you want to just give us an update? Any projects? Anything that going on?
Sure. Yeah, um, so I mean, we've been focusing on really, um, getting the move and assisting with Hunt Plaza over the last, you know, three or four months. And then I was also getting the plans for the town hall to the state. Got several staff members still working hard on the, um, uh, 2021 sewer rehab project in the Granada neighborhood. So that's still going. Um, they're, they're moving fast, but it's a, it's a long project. So still more work to do. Um, and then separate of that, um, you know, we're, we're pushing this Paradise Tribe Complete Streets project as well. So we've got a public workshop coming up on this Thursday. It's actually a special, um, BPAC meeting, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee meeting um, via Zoom at 6:30. So encourage, um, everyone to join in and, and give their thoughts. Um, we'll be talking about that project, um, between Westward and just past Rammer Drive, but also kind of understanding the, the larger corridor and discussing some long-term goals for the town, um, on Paradise Drive.
All right, thanks. Any, did any council member have any questions for either, um, Adam or RJ? No? Okay, I'll just open it up for public comment. If anybody from the public wishes to, um, make any comments with respect to RJ and Adam comments. Okay, I don't see any, so I'll close public comment. And RJ, I appreciate the, um, the firm you're using because I'm on Granada in our area, El Camino Grata. They're really great. They're very accommodating. Like, we're trying to get cars out of the driveway or just get down the street. They're just really accommodating. So, um, I appreciate their work that they're doing also. So thanks, Nick. And with that, we'll go to town council member reports. Eli.
Thank you, sir. Um, real quick, January 7th, we had a League of California Cities North Bay Division Executive Committee meeting. Nothing too exciting to report there. January 11th, CMSA Central Sanitation Agency Board Meeting. Uh, the big news is that we're moving forward with the pension obligation bonds. So that's great. And we're going to basically mirror exactly what Corder Madara did and take all of the savings, you know, the arbitrage should be generated from that.
Couple more minutes, I'm gonna come back.
Retire. Which I think is great. January 13th, MCCMC Water Policy Committee, um, Charles joined as well. Uh, we had low attendance. It was a brief discussion, but we laid the groundwork uh, for a, I, I believe at our next meeting, we're going to hear from, uh, Congressman Jared Huffman. He's going to join us to talk to us about, uh, you know, funding and grant opportunities in the federal infrastructure bill that recently passed for, uh, all sorts of local water policy programs, initiatives, uh, that type of thing, both conservation and looking at new sources. And we're trying to line up a similar meeting, uh, with hopefully Senator McGuire or Assembly Member Levine to tell us about funding opportunities that may exist at the state level. Um, so good news there. Hopefully, you know, the next time a drought comes around, we won't be caught quite so flat footed, but fingers crossed. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Eli. Uh, Lila.
Thanks, Fran. All I had to report on was that we had the, uh, Project Home Key or Casa Buena, um, community meeting last week. Um, and that served as an introduction to Homeward Bound that will be operating the property. Um, they gave an update on the construction. They're still planning to be completed by March. Um, there's going to be an open house where people can come in and, and see the renovated units. Um, and we are starting to think about organizing welcome baskets or things like that, that we can do to welcome these new, uh, residents to Corder Madara. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Uh, Bob?
Uh, just quickly, I happen to be the Town Center Farmers Market today that Adam, Martha were having the, uh, housing element. And I got to witness some of those enlightening conversations and they're doing a great job. And Adam, thank you for doing that. I mean, it's great. The more public input we get at this phase, the better off we're going to be on this. So thank you. And also just wanted to thank RJ, we have a street lamp right in front of our house that was just replaced last week. And it is great. The street is so much brighter. It's fantastic. So thank you. Great job. Thanks.
Thanks, Bob. Charles?
Uh, yeah, I, I also have a street light out front and they adjusted it the second day and it's, um, it provides a lot more light and, and not as much glare. Uh, it's a much nicer light. So thank you. I'm glad to see that be a success. Um, also, uh, I attended the same meeting Eli presented in, um, he didn't speak so highly of himself, but I will. Um, he presented a, a few different presentations that he had gotten from the CM, uh, from the quarter, what is it? C of C?
Central Marin Sanitation Agency.
Yeah, CMs, so, um, but in general, uh, they're looking for new resource, uh, kind of reclamation and they actually have changed their entire designation, uh, which I found very fascinating. And they're working with, um, the Marin Water Group, uh, for new, new, uh, additional resources and, and looking at different levels of cleanliness, tertiary versus secondary. Um, it, you know, it's very fascinating. And, and are those available to the public, Eli? Because I, I think that ultimately other people might want access to those, but it was very informative for the group.
CMSA has two studies going on right now for recycled water. One is looking at providing, uh, providing tertiary water, which is for all non potable uses, basically. And the others looking at a direct potable reuse, uh, program for the future. Uh, the studies are going to be available in March and April. So I'll just report back out when those come before the board, when they're finished.
Got it. But very exciting work at the state and local level for that. And the synergies hopefully will give us water resiliency for the next 200 years. Um, and then also, uh, I won't speak to it because ultimately, um, it, the, I went, I listened in to the workshops for the Parks and Rec, to just hear what the residents had to say. And I thought it was, uh, well-attended and well-run. Um, and I think it gave, uh, all the residents the ability to speak to the results of the, uh, survey, but then also just talk about the process of completing the master plan for parks and where we're all wanting to go. And, um, it was just good to hear, uh, everyone, um, enthusiastically talking about how great we are and how better, you know, we're going to be. So, um, I hope, I think those are recorded. So hopefully you can, uh, listen to them or are we gonna, um, Rebecca, are we gonna show results from that? Or are those results available from the kind of surveys and data that was taken from that, the notes and everything?
Yes, uh, Ashley Howe will be providing an update to council, I believe, at the next, the February 1st town council meeting. And we'll also be talking about summarizing the survey results and the workshop results for the Parks and Recreation Commission at their meeting next Monday. And all that will be made available on the website after both of those meetings.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Charles. And for me, I attended Twin Cities Disaster Prepartness Committee. Um, and I also with Liva attended the, um, Home Key, um, community meeting. That was last week, actually myself, between myself and Michael Moriarty, we moderated the whole thing. So that worked out really well. And I'm just a little bit bummed because I don't have new streetlight in front of my house, but I'm sure it'll be coming soon. Um, and then the last thing for me also is that, um, Eli had started, I think, the community chat with the mayor under his term. Um, we're going to re, I'm going to rebrand it a little and just re-engineer it a little. So we're looking at holding the mayor's forum, which is going to be the fourth Tuesday of every month at 5:30 in the afternoon. Um, we'll still do the thing where I'll give an update on council. Todd will be there to give an update on what's going on around town. There'll be a Q and A session. But each month what we're going to do is have one member of staff come and talk about their specific area and what's going on. So for the one next week, Michael Moriarty is going to be up first. So he'll be talking about what's going on with code enforcement. Um, so we're going to tee that up. We may schedule them out a couple of months as far as who's going to be speaking, but we want to leave it somewhat fluid in case a special topic comes up, we can just insert a particular staff member to talk about that. So again, those will start, um, next week, actually. And with that, um, does anybody from the public have any questions on council member reports? Okay, I don't see anything. So we'll close public comment on that. We have our agenda for, um, our next meeting. And I think Rebecca kind of mentioned this. It's probably Park and Rec meeting. So RJ and Adam, you're probably off the hook for next, uh, at least the first meeting next month. Um, Ashley's going to come to us with an update on what's going on with Park and Rec. And I think we're also going to get the fee schedule from Park and Rec also. So maybe Park and Rec type meeting. And with that, if there's no other business, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the town council meeting. And we do have an S, S2, uh, sanitary district to me. Bob, did you need to say something or? I just saw a hand fly. Okay, we're good. Okay. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and open up the, um, sanitary two district meeting, uh, call the meeting in order. Rebecca, can we get a roll call, please? Roll call, please?
Yes, uh, board member Beckman?
Here.
Board member Mangan?
Here.
Board member Avazia?
Here.
Board vice president Lee?
There.
And board president Beckman. Uh, sorry, board president, because he says, sorry, it's going to take me.
My house soon we forget. Here. With that, I'd like to open up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak, uh, on any topic that's not on the agenda? Okay, uh, do we get any email versus, uh, TCM mail.org?
Just refreshing, um, but no, Merkisasa, it does not appear that we received any emailed public comments for sanitary district open time.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and close public comment. Uh, we have no presentations, uh, consent calendar. These are items that are in the normal course of business and they've been just, uh, already have been discussed. Uh, they can't be approved by a single motion. Any member of the district board, staff or public and, uh, request that item be removed and further discussed. So with that, is there anybody from, uh, the board, staff or the public that wish to have a, um, consent item removed for further discussion? I don't see anybody from the board, staff or the public. So with that, I will bring it back to the board for a possible motion to approve the consent calendar. Uh, Bob?
Move items 4A through 4D.
Okay, is there a second? Uh, Eli has a second. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, go ahead and call for the vote.
Board member Beckman?
Yes.
Board member Mangan?
Yes.
Excuse me, yes. Board member Avazia?
Yes.
Board vice president Lee?
Yes.
And board president Casissa.
Yes. Uh, we do not have any public hearings. We do not have any business items. Uh, is there a district manager report or RJ? Let me turn that over to you. Or do you have anything to report on?
Nothing in this store report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any board member reports? Okay, do not see anything. Uh, we do have a draft agenda for our next meeting. Um, and with that, if there's no further business, I was really quick, I will go ahead and adjourn the sanitary two district meeting. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.